Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Boarded Meeting for October 1st, 2013. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins, absent. Cammer.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed within asterisks are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at the appropriate point on the agenda. At this point, is there anything that anyone would like to add or remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, if there's no further questions, I'd like to place number one on the consent agenda.
D1.
D1.
Is there any issues with that? All right. Under License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Carbonaro has placed D1 under the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we place F1 under the consent agenda.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions I might want to ask when we come to that.
Okay. All right, so if there's no further items to add to the consent, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Trustee Shipman, seconded by Trustee Martin. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
All right, so that the motion carries to approve the amended consent agenda.
To approve the amended consent agenda.
Now I'd entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Martin. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report. In seeing none, we'll move on to the President's Report. We have two items on the President's Report. The first item is under Bartlett's Best. Could the Representatives for the Lions Club come on up? And as you're coming up, I'll read the Declaration. Whereas on September 19th, 1939, the 29 men signed the Charter for the Bartlett Lions Club, beginning the organization's many decades of civic service in our community. And whereas for more than 70 years, the club has supported the causes of Lions International, which includes acting as Knights of the Blind, and the Crusade Against Darkness, and 1925 Challenge of Helen Keller. And whereas, in addition to collecting and refurbishing eyeglasses and hearing aids for those in need, today's Bartlett Lions work year-round sponsoring everything from their annual Easter egg hunt, Visit with Santa, Labor Day Dash, to Pancake Breakfast, Golf Outings, Candy Days, Holiday Food Boxes, and more. And whereas, the 4th of July Celebration in Bartlett would not be complete without the eagerly anticipated and well-attended Bartlett Lions Club Independence Day Parade of Bands, Floats, and Non-Stop Fun. Whereas, the proceeds from the group's many events and fundraisers are used to send special needs children to camp, provide diabetes awareness and screenings, offer scholarships to outstanding students, and continue their other good works that advance the Lions' "We Serve" tradition. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, do hereby proclaim our deep appreciation to the Bartlett Lions Club for their hard work, dedication, and their many, many contributions to our village. The generosity of spirit that these men and women continue to share with us makes our hearts swell beyond lion's eyes. Dated this first day of October, 2013, and if there are no objections from the board, I will so proclaim. My children have been benefit of many of your events, so thank you again so much. The next item on the President's Report are the 2013 Pride and Ownership Awards. There are six winners this year. The Village of Bartlett is pleased to recognize the winners of the 2013 Pride and Ownership Awards. The Pride and Ownership Program was started in Bartlett in 1996 to recognize owners who are doing an outstanding job in maintaining their property. The Village calls out for nominees at the beginning of the summer, and volunteer judges visit all of the nominated properties evaluating them on general appearance, landscaping, curb appeal, and creativity. This year, 19 single-family homes and three multifamily properties were nominated for the Pride and Ownership Award. Out of those nominees, first, second, and third-place winners were chosen in the single-family category and three winners in the multifamily category. And what I'd like to do is, as I call your name as the winners, could you please step up? And Scott will hand you the award, and if you could stay up for a picture afterwards, that would be great. The multifamily home, we'll start with them first. Third place, Mr. Harold Corrigan. Harold here? Second-place winner is Ms. Elaine Jansen, 167A Peter Court. First place for multifamily homes goes to Ms. Phyllis Jensen at 195B Thomas Court. And for the single-family category, third-place winner is Mr. and Mrs. John Miaso, 1215 Triple Second place is Mr. and Mrs. Randy Wadener, 866 Forest Glen Court. And first place for single-family homes is Mr. and Mrs. James Prose, 444 East Chippendale The Village congratulates all of the nominated and winning homeowners and thanks them for helping to keep Bartlett beautiful.
Come to your place afterwards, won't you? Come to your place after. Feel free to trade if your plant doesn't match your house.
And I think it's appropriate to announce that what was just laid on our desk here, it's time to order Bartlett Lions Club Christmas wreaths. Order early and often.
And often.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our Town Hall meeting. In the Town Hall meeting, we invite folks from the audience to step up to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Can I remind everybody at this time that we're always willing to accept compliments and congratulations on anything we've done?
TL, you do a good job. Evening, Kevin. Trustees, staff. Wanted to just say thank you for this past Friday. We had a very nice open house over at the Auto Truck Group. The Village was well-represented. They put on a nice lunch. I had a personal tour guiding through the place. It was very impressive to see the support of the Village. I came in my role as a Commissioner. You were there. I know a lot of people have jobs. The Village was well-represented. We had great food, and it was quite an interesting place, a great business for our town, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Good evening. Richard Lewis, 868 Braintree Lane, in regards to the new Walgreens proposal. If, first, if I could ask those that live along Norwood and Braintree to please stand for just a second to be recognized for being here in the audience, if you wouldn't mind. TL, you can stay seated if you like. I just wanted to point this out. For sake of everyone's time, I'm going to attempt to represent the thoughts and feelings of those neighbors that live along Norwood and Braintree, the cut-through corridor, if you will, so that we don't have to file up here one by one and...
We couldn't ask for a better representative.
However, by all means, I want those in the audience to please let their thoughts be known if I miss something, or if they feel that I've misrepresented them in any way to the board, if you'll indulge me perhaps just a little bit longer in three minutes, but I promise to be, keep it short. There were two main themes in our concern about the proposed new Walgreens. The first was a concern over the upkeep of the view between the residents' homes and the back of the current shopping center, and the potential for an undesirable tenant in the current Walgreens space. The second theme to this was the concern over the cut-through traffic that comes through our neighborhood. Regarding the first issue, even though this might surprise you, there has been some very productive discussion between the residents and the shopping center. I invited them to my home and backyard to see firsthand some of the issues that we were concerned with. And Dennis Kortese, Tom Helgith, and Tom, I probably mispronounced your name, I apologize, Wayne Rogers did come by for a visit and did put forth a very nice gesture to the residents. I have a copy of the letter here that was provided to me with its attachments, and I see that the board was copied on that very memo. For completeness sake, I hope that this will be included in the minutes of this meeting. I think it's important to highlight what was offered. Firstly, have generously offered to plant 30 trees or provide $7,500 for the purchase of trees for the 10 homes that border the mall, and to the extent possible, plant and maintain those trees on the mall property. Many of the neighbors have discussed this, and we really appreciate that offer. Currently, we are leaning towards fewer trees in exchange for perhaps taller ones, and we think evergreens would be our best option for year-round barrier. And a few of us may purchase some additional trees on our own, but we can certainly work out those details at a later time. In regard to our concerns over the type of tenant that could take over the current Walgreens space, these gentlemen were able to point out that we really have very little to worry about because of the limited use for B3 zoning, and perhaps even more importantly, the restrictions that the Walgreens Corporation had put in place. That, quite frankly, was a list of some things that hadn't even crossed my mind, so we were pleased to see that. Some of our main concerns, such as things like automobile repair or service station requires special use for B3, and things like loud bars or even discos, are prohibited by the Walgreens restrictions, all of which was included, again, in the correspondence from Bartlett Venture One. And again, a big thank you to those gentlemen for pointing out those, that information to us. So really, at this time, it just leaves us with the second major issue, which is the cut-through traffic on Norwood and Braintree. To many of the neighbors, this is the biggest issue because it certainly includes an element of safety, especially for those who have school-aged children. This, of course, is not an issue that Bartlett Venture One can solve for us, and through my discussions with them, I know they are maintaining a neutral position regarding possible solutions. The question, of course, is what to do, and I suspect we cannot come to a good answer to that question here tonight. If, however, and this is a big if, if we as a village will commit to finding a resolution to the cut-through traffic, I think we are probably okay with a new Walgreens. But the neighbors are putting this out there with the good faith that concrete actions will be put forth to reduce the amount and speed of traffic on Norwood and Braintree. We've come up with a long list of potential solutions, from everything from closing Norwood with the cul-de-sac as it was originally designed, to local traffic only, to speed bumps, and the list goes on. Perhaps we experiment with some of those options and see if they can work, and if they don't work, move on to the next idea. Whatever the plan, the residents are willing to work with the village to resolve this issue. And again, we just ask that the village commits to resolving this issue with concrete actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. My name is Paul Swanson. I'm a business rep with the Carpenters, Local 839, a member of Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm here tonight, I'm not a resident of Bartlett, but I work in Bartlett every day, and I'm representing the 114 members of our organization that live in Bartlett. And I'm speaking in support of this Walgreens, for the jobs it'll bring, for the better service it'll bring for the community. I have, this is the fifth time, I think, I've stood up with Dennis and Wayne to support their projects, and they all go with concern for the community, they all go with concern for the workers, they're safe jobs. And I just support this effort, just as a place to put my carpenters to work, just as they worked here when you built this beautiful gift to your village, and I will compliment you on the terrific job you're doing. And keep it up.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Sufferin. This is my wife, Jan, and we live at 316 Oakbrook Court, and our business is Banbury Fair at 211 Railroad Avenue. I'm here for two reasons. Reason number one is to thank the village, staff, and board for Heritage Days and helping out with Heritage Days. You know, the trolley rides and the attraction of people in the downtown, we're convinced is the way to help spur on the economic development of downtown. And so Heritage Days this year was a big success, and want to thank you for supporting that. Hope we can have that support again. And the second reason I'm here is to kind of let everyone know that Banbury Fair, this commemorates our 30th year in business in downtown Bartlett. And so we really do feel blessed that, you know, our lives included Banbury Fair, and each of you, in the staff in particular, have really helped. I saw Paul. Can't tell you how many times when I see a snowplow truck coming through, thinking, okay, I'm going to have a couple customers come through. And I've asked a lot of Valerie, and Jim, and Brian, and just about everybody, and always felt like we had a partner in business for these 30 years. So we're very grateful for all the support we've gotten. And to commemorate our 30th year this coming weekend, weather permitting, we have Friday night, we have invitations for you all. We're having a band play live onstage. It's a Beatle band, and so we're calling this "A Very Thin Slice of Ravinia" here in downtown Bartlett. So we're encouraging if you, I know it's late notice, so if any of you have the opportunity to come, bring a couple of chairs and a picnic basket, and sit under the stars in beautiful downtown Bartlett on Banbury Fair. And, you know, we encourage each of you to support the businesses that are in downtown Bartlett. Each and every person's support in Bartlett is very critical for our little businesses to survive. And the support that we've had from the citizens of Bartlett, and the Bartlett Examiner, and the Park District, and the Lions Club, and the Volunteer Fire Department, all these many years, we're just very grateful. So I don't know there's going to be another 30, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Sufferin. Fond memories of my kids when they were wee little ones, visiting the rabbits at Banbury Fair, so look forward to this weekend. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the Standing Committee Reports, and the first Standing Committee Report is Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by Trustee Cammer.
Thank you, President Wallace. There are two items this evening under the Planning and Zoning Committee. First item is the proposed development of a new standalone Walgreens at the southeast corner of Route 59 and Sterns Road. Bartlett Venture One LLC has filed a petition with the village for approval of a plot of re-subdivision and consolidation, rezoning of a portion of its property from B2, local convenience shopping district, to B3, neighborhood shopping district, a special-use permit for packaged liquor sales, seven variations, a 34-foot reduction of the 50-foot corner side yard along Route 59, a 1.4-foot reduction of the required 30-foot yard, rear yard, to allow the canopies to encroach more than three feet into the required corner side and interior yards, a reduction in the required 20-foot interior parkway landscape with requirement, reduction of nine parking spaces from the required number of parking spaces for Lot 1 Walgreens, a reduction in the required 180-square-foot parking stall measurement, and site plan review and approval for a standalone Walgreens pharmacy store on the property located on the northwest corner of Route 59 and Sterns Road, and review and approval of an overall site plan for the combined Walgreens property and adjoining Brewster Creek Shopping Center property. Both the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval, subject to conditions and made findings of the fact. The board reviewed the project with the petitioners' request at its September 17th, 2013 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Due to the nature of the zoning relief sought, I would ask Jim Polazinski to put up the plans for the project on the screen and walk us through the different zoning relief that is being requested.
Thank you, Trustee Cammer. This is just a air photo of the site at the northeast corner. The platte subdivision, or re-subdivision consolidating the corner piece and part of the parking lot, which is the old gas station site, that will be Lot 1. The remainder of the site will be the Lot 2 of the development. Again, the overall site plan showing the location of the proposed Walgreens with the parking lot in the front. And just going over the site plan, some of the relief they are asking for. Again, encroachment into the side yard setbacks for the parking, the building. The interior parkway along this way is a reduction. Those are three of them. Generally, the 180-foot square foot parking space, cars, we use 162 square foot. We've used that for a while. This is an older part of the ordinance. That's another portion of the relief. The canopies generally for the drive-through, those encroached into the side yard, that's one of the other variations. The rear yard is actually here, and there's a one-and-a-half-foot reduction in the rear yard for the building, right along that property line. And then I got the parkway, the parking encroaching also in the 50-foot front and corner side yards. And then the overall reduction of the nine parking spaces for this site, the Walgreens parking is here, just to remind you that the center does have additional parking to the east. And that's the overall variances they're requesting. And just switching over to the landscape plan, again, you can see all the landscaping that they're installing, and this is, the only reduction they're asking for is the interior parkway width of 20 feet is being asked for a reduction as a variation for that. And that's pretty much the sum and substance of their proposal.
Thank you, Jim. With that, I would move that the passage of Ordinance 2013-78, an ordinance approving a final plot of re-subdivision of Lot 1 in the Brewster Creek Center and consolidation, rezoning, granting a special-use permit of packaged liquor sales, granting variations for Walgreens, and a site plan approval for Walgreens and the Brewster Creek Center.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Erins, to pass Ordinance 2013-78, an ordinance approving a final plot of re-subdivision of Lot 1 in Brewster Creek Center and consolidation, rezoning, granting a special-use permit for packaged liquor sales, granting variations for Walgreens, and site plan approval for Walgreens and the Brewster Creek Center. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, if I may. As we mentioned, I think, at last meeting, this was a big vote for all of us, I think. And I know in speaking with everybody, quite a bit of thought went into it. I had a much longer-winded speech. You can thank Mr. Lewis that it'll be very truncated at this point, so you have a career in public service perhaps one day. I just want to say thank you to him and to the other residents for coming tonight and for working collaboratively with our local business. At its heart, that's what the village and its residents are supposed to do. We, as the government, and if I'm speaking for the government for a moment, need to step out of the way and let people work together as teams. And I think you've demonstrated that tonight in spades. So my hat's off to all of you who came tonight, all of you who took an interest in this, especially Mr. Lewis for kind of coordinating things, and to our business community, all of you, for working together to find solutions that made everybody happy. And seemingly, this can go forward now without a hitch on that. I have some other things regarding Walgreens. I think that it's a good thing that they're there. I think it's a great thing that the ownership has worked out with the residents, so my support will be on this vote. And I think moving forward, I hope that more of us can emulate what you people have demonstrated for us tonight. And speaking strictly for myself, you have my commitment to help you with your concerns on traffic. Based as a resident and on my full-time job, I have very serious concerns about traffic anywhere in this village or anywhere where I work. And so I'm going to do whatever I can to work with our police, with our public works, with our administration, to make sure that we find some solutions that are long-term and that are accurate, and are satisfying for you, the residents. So we'll be talking more in the future. Hold me to it. I'm going to hold everybody else to it. And that's all that I have to say on it.
Trustee Shipman. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right. The next item on the Planning and Zoning Committee is the request for an early earthworks permit in connection with the same standalone Walgreens. The village's subdivision ordinance provides for allowing excavation work to begin after the ordinance approving a final platte and zoning relief has been passed, but before the platte has been fully signed and recorded, and before the conditions in the ordinance have been fully satisfied. If the owner and developer sign a letter acknowledging it is proceeding at its own peril and satisfies the conditions on an early earthworks checklist. Bartlett Venture One LLC has met the conditions in the subdivision ordinance for an early earthworks permit. Therefore, I move to approve the request of Bartlett Venture One LLC to begin asphalt removal, environmental remediation, and site grading work only for the Brewster Creek Center re-subdivision consolidation. Approval is subject to the completion of all items on the checklist for early earthwork. Approval is further conditioned on the agreement that this does not relieve Bartlett Venture One LLC of their responsibilities to complete the final re-subdivision platte approval process, and to complete all work in accordance with all applicable municipal codes.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Erins. Is there any, let me read it again, to approve the request for Bartlett Venture One LLC to begin site grading and environmental remediation for the Brewster Creek Center re-subdivision consolidation. Is there any discussion?
I did want to say we often allow early earthworks approval for development in light of the fact that oftentimes there's a lot of engineering and other plans that have to be made, and it allows the petitioner then to start work as soon as possible. This is not an unusual request, certainly, and it is done solely on the basis that all risk is borne... risk is borne upon the petitioner. So if the petitioner puts in, you know, a million dollars' worth of early earthworks, he knows that if in the final analysis the work is not approved, he's out. So in the light of that, I think, because of whom we're dealing with, that the early earthworks is justified.
Thank you, Trustee Aaronz. Is there any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And that's all I have for this.
Thank you, Trustee Cameron. The next item on the Standing Committee Reports is the Building Committee, Chairman Martin.
I have no report tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next item on our agenda, under Standing Committee, is Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. The next item on the agenda is under License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Mr. Mayor, both of the items are on the consent. Do we need to still put an ordinance number on this?
Seventy-nine.
It'll be seventy-nine.
I have nothing further to report.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on the Standing Committee Reports is under Police and Health, Chairman Shipman.
Nothing to report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman. Final item under Standing Committee Reports is under Public Works Committee, Chairman Aaronz.
Thank you. Our only agenda item is road salt purchase. We could be against that. At this time, Mr. Kester is requesting to purchase some salt, and this was let out for bid, and he has recommended that we award the bid to Cargill Incorporated at $59.28 per ton. We will be ordering 1,800 tons at this time, and for the 2013-14 season, and if any more is needed, we'll go out for independent bid. So at this time, I would move the village board award the bid for 1,800 tons of road salt to Cargill Incorporated in the amount of $59.28 per ton.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Aaronz, seconded by Trustee Martin. Is there any discussion?
I just have a couple questions I can maybe ask, Valerie.
Falty questions?
Probably. Not too bad, not too bad. So what I'm assuming here is that we've retained 40% of our salt from last year, is that correct?
Most definitely. The last two years were pretty mild. We are starting out with our stock completely plum-full. All of our barns are plum-full.
So there's no way for us to take in more salt? As we look at the information that was given to us, my one concern would be, I don't know what happened in 2008 and 2009, how there was a shortage, but, you know, it seems to me if we have, if there's a way to keep the surplus going, I don't know if there is or not, but you'd hate to have a year where we're going to pay $159 a ton for salt, so...
Fifty.
Everyone ran out, that's why it's so high.
What's that?
It was a big storm, everyone ran out. Everyone was, they were mixing it with sand.
Yep. So we'd hate to see that happen again. I'm just saying that we plan to spend the budget, is that right, for the $125,000 on salt?
It all depends on the weather. That year that it was so expensive is when the Mississippi River froze, and we couldn't get salt, so the cost of what we could get went up exponentially.
I see. Okay.
Global cooling.
And demand.
What we were able to do this year in the budget, typically, we budget $250,000 every year for salt. This year, because of the excess amount of salt that we had left over, we decreased that to 125 in the budget this year, planning on not having to spend out, not having to use that. We can't control how much salt we are, there's only one person that can do that, and that's Mother Nature. If there's anybody that can figure out how to do that, please let me know. I have not been able to figure that out yet, how to control Mother Nature. So that's what the big help is. Yes, it would be nice to be able to keep enough material for the following year to start out plum-full instead of empty. We have had that pleasure the past two years. We have had two mild winters back-to-back.
True. Okay.
And you don't want to run out.
That's right.
Most definitely.
That's all.
Is there any other discussion?
That's all the questions I had.
Thank you, Trustee Cameron. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is new business. At this point, is there any new business?
I'd like to introduce some new business. In talking with my neighbors on Braintree Lane, through Mr. Lewis, at this time, I'd like to propose that we do some traffic counts coming into the Brewster Creek Shopping Center, going out of the Brewster Creek Shopping Center, the counts of the cars that drive through our subdivision on Norwood and Braintree, and let's take it from there. I would also request that we put up a local traffic-only sign at Norwood near, well, Norwood near Kinder Care, and at Braintree and Sterns. Knowing that perhaps this is the very least we can do to support our residents in Bartlett Lake Estates, I think that should be something that we could do right away if none of the trustees object.
How much longer is the construction on Sterns going to be going on?
Careful.
Do we think?
What a good question.
They have to be done. DuPage County has a limitation of November 15 for the roadway surface to be all repaired. They are running about two to three weeks behind time. They were scheduled to be completed September 30. Obviously, that's gone. I would say by the end of the month, month of October, would be a fair shot.
My suggestion would be, to get an accurate count, we start this the day after they're done.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to help the people back there, but we're not getting an accurate count until everything's out of there.
But I don't see any reason why we can't put up those signs immediately.
Sure.
You know, let's see what it does.
No through traffic?
We don't know if it's going to do anything, but gee, we sure can try, you know? Okay? If that's okay with everyone else, no objections.
Absolutely. We have to do something to help them.
Okay. Thank you. Great. That's my new business.
Fantastic new business, Trustee Aaronz. Is there any other new business? I think there are. As you noticed on the agenda, I skipped our question-answer first because I thought it would be repetitive, so are there any questions and answers now from the board, from the staff, or anything else?
When's the next Lions pancake breakfast?
Yeah, when is the next Lions? We can announce that.
Oh, it is. Oh, I don't know.
It's November, it's...
November 8?
November 3rd. November 3rd?
November 3rd. Next Lions pancake breakfast.
I'll walk amongst you right after the meeting to hand out the...
Stick around.
Lions Club Christmas wreath order sheets.
There's no additional questions answered at this time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
It was moved by Trustee Aaronz, seconded by Trustee Shipman. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?